Number two five dash one eight four in the matter of a journey out of executive session.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, vote.
Vote on motion two five dash one eight four. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
I'd like to welcome everyone to the March tenth, twenty twenty five, the Commissioners' hearing for the Evans number three fifty-four drainage improvement project. And this is the Evans watershed drainage improvement project. There's a sign-in sheet circulating in the room and we ask that everybody sign the sheet who is here, and I'll give you a little review of what's going to happen today. We will hear a summary of the final hearing report from the county engineer and the Soil and Water Conservation District. Following the summary presentation, there will be a time for questions from the board. After board questions, the board will hear from any interested owners that wish to testify. Those speaking for or against the petition must be an owner as defined in section six one, three one point oh one of the Ohio Revised Code. The board will acknowledge receipt of any landowner written testimony before hearing live testimony. We will first call all those wishing to testify in favor of the project, and then we'll call all those wishing to testify in opposition to the project. And before testifying, you'll be asked to take an oath. After all those willing to testify, wishing to testify for or against the project have been heard, there will be an opportunity for rebuttal testimony. The board will close the public hearing after all the testimony and evidence has been presented. After listening to testimony and the report of the engineer, the board will decide whether to find in favor of the improvement, affirm the previous order, confirm the assessments, and approve the payment schedule, or the board may dismiss the petition and set aside the previous order. The board must consider the following factors in making the decision: whether the proposed improvement is necessary, whether the proposed improvement will be conducive to the public welfare, and whether the cost of the proposed improvement will be less than the benefit than that the improvement provides. And the first thing that we do is take into account, is it the exception to the assessment?
We did receive two letters for written testimony. One was some comments from Nick D. Nicholas, and then we received a second one from the Pritchards, which we have to acknowledge due to the format that that was turned in. So I can go ahead and read that resolution.
Okay.
Resolution number two five dash one eight five in the matter of the Delaware County Board of Commissioners acknowledging receipt of written objection and rejecting for consideration the exception to the assessment filed by Mike Montana Pritchard in the proceedings for the Evans number three five four watershed drainage improvement project.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. This, as I understand it, this this exception was not submitted in a timely manner. It needed to be submitted five days ahead of time. Correct?
That's right. Eric Hostetler, General Counsel. The statutory deadline, this came in, arrived in our office after that deadline, so we will consider it as written objections, basically written testimony.
Okay.
But in terms of considering it as an exception to the assessments, we would have to reject that.
Okay. And then they can testify?
Correct, yeah.
Either pro or con. Okay. Okay.
Vote on motion two five dash one eight five, Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Thank you. Hello, Brett.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Brett Bacon, Deputy Administrator, Soil and Water Conservation District. We have a brief presentation outlining the project, and I'd be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Okay.
The Evans petition states in Delaware County Harlem Township, within the Evans number three fifty-four watershed, and generally following but not limited to the course and termini of the existing improvements. Further states to generally improve the drainage, both surface and subsurface, to a good and sufficient outlet by replacing, repairing, or altering the existing improvements as required, and/or creating new surface and subsurface drainage mains or laterals as requested by this petition. The petition was filed on May twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-one. On July nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one, an amendment was filed by Ryan and Rebecca King. On August sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, the view was held. On October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one, the first hearing was held. The Evans watershed is approximately three hundred seventeen acres. Of this, fifty-five percent is agricultural, thirty-two percent rural residential, eleven percent woods, and two percent road right-of-way and commercial. The original petition, including the amendment, was signed by four individuals representing two of the fifty-one parcels in the watershed. Project's divided into two sections to reflect the request of the petition. Main one, as you can see with the black and white line, is open channel restoration, rock line channel construction, surface drain construction, subsurface drain tile replacement, clearing of brush and vegetation, drive culvert installation, and seeding and mulching. Main two is the upstream portion of the project. This will consist of installation of drainage structures, subsurface drain tile installation, again, clearing of brush and vegetation, and seeding and mulching. We have a drone video of the project length. This is starting at the upstream end, flying north to south generally. And this will be flying over section two as defined in the report.
And when was this taken?
Uh, this was two weeks ago.
Just for the record, though?
Yeah.
That standing water we're looking at?
Yes. Specifically, this would have been Wednesday, the twenty-sixth, I believe. Still section two. This tree line that we're looking at right here, that is where we transition from section two to section one. Okay, some representative pictures. This would be an open channel, vegetated surface drain, rock line channel, and a tile breather installation. These will be representative of what would be constructed. Project cost estimate, main one, construction, one hundred sixty-six thousand, seven hundred thirteen dollars, sixty-two cents. Administration, engineering, and inspection, nine thousand, three hundred sixty dollars, eighty-eight cents, twenty-five thousand dollars estimated contingency, and a drainage maintenance pay-in of eight thousand, eight hundred three dollars, seventy-two cents, for a total of two hundred nine thousand, eight hundred seventy-eight dollars and twenty-two cents. Main two, construction, one hundred thirty, forty, forty-eight, twelve. Administration, engineering, and inspection, eight thousand, two hundred sixty-three, oh three, fifteen thousand estimated for contingency. Drainage maintenance pay-in, six thousand, nine hundred thirty-five dollars and fifty-six cents, for a total of one hundred sixty thousand, six hundred forty-six dollars, six hundred forty-six dollars and seventy-one cents, and a total project estimate of three hundred seventy thousand, five hundred twenty-four dollars and ninety-three cents. Assessments for the project are calculated according to the benefits received. The Ohio Revised Code specifically quotes, "Uplands that have been removed from their natural state by deforestation, cultivation, artificial drainage, urban development, or other human methods shall be considered to be benefited by an improvement that is required to dispose of the accelerated flow of water from the uplands." Assessments are calculated using a formula that takes into account acres benefited, land use, and percent use of the project. These are multiplied together to produce a parcel assessment factor. The parcel percentage share, then, is the parcel's individual assessment factor divided by the sum of all the assessment factors. And then the parcel assessment is that percentage share times the total estimated cost. Landowners have two different options to pay their assessment. They may pay it in full, upfront, within thirty days of the final hearing, or they can choose to have it placed on their property tax bill as a special assessment. Having the assessment placed on property taxes will include interest and other fees if the project is bonded, and auditors and treasurers fees. As an example, using the total estimated construction cost of three seventy-five, twenty-four, ninety-three, an average assessment, not including the right-of-way, is seven thousand dollars or a one-point-nine percent share of the project. Debt issuing fees for this example would be eight thousand dollars, and bond interest, four percent estimated, would be fourteen thousand, eight hundred twenty-one dollars over the full cost of the project. The total estimated cost with borrowing fees, then, would be three hundred ninety-three thousand, three forty-five, ninety-three. Two percent of this estimated total cost is seven thousand, four hundred seventy-three dollars and fifty-seven cents. The auditor's treasurer's fees on this amount is one hundred forty-nine dollars, forty-seven cents, for a total assessment for the sample parcel of seven thousand, six hundred twenty-three dollars and four cents. Looking at this over two sample repayment schedules, eight years and fifteen years, you can see that the eight-year payment semi-annually would be four seventy-six, forty-four, and the fifteen-year payment semi-annually annually would be two hundred fifty-four dollars and ten cents. Approved projects are advertised for public bid, with the lowest and best bid awarded the contract. Bids may not be accessed, accepted, excuse me, in excess of the final engineering estimate per Ohio Revised Code. The final scheduled assessments would be reduced pro rata between the difference of the final cost and the estimated cost if the project is lower than the engineer's estimate. Upfront payments, in this case, would receive a refund. O R C sixty-one, thirty-seven requires all completed projects to be placed onto the drainage maintenance program. The purpose of drainage maintenance is to keep the project operating at its design capacity, and maintenance funds are collected as a special assessment similar to the construction assessment. Common maintenance activities include inspections, seeding, repairs, and erosion control. Maintenance assessments are determined based on the final schedule of construction assessments, and most of our projects average between two and a half to five percent annually for their collection. The collection percentage can vary depending on the maintenance needs of the project, and drainage maintenance is perpetual and ongoing. Going back to our example, our construction assessment of seven thousand dollars times a three percent maintenance collection, including the auditor and treasurer's fees, would be two hundred forty-one dollars, twenty cents annually. Looking back at our amortization, then, you can see the maintenance assessment there, with the construction assessment dropping off in twenty thirty-four with the eight-year repayment, and then twenty forty-one with the fifteen-year payment. Cost benefit. Benefits of drainage improvements exist for both agricultural and residential parcels. The benefit to agricultural parcels is realized by the increased yield as a result of good drainage. Estimated yield increases, given the soils in the area, would average forty-six bushels per acre for corn, and fourteen bushels per acre for soybeans, given the appropriate drainage improvements are in place. The USDA average crop price from twenty seventeen to twenty twenty-one for corn is five dollars and eight cents per bushel, and for soybeans is twelve dollars and seventeen cents per bushel. One hundred seventy-three acres of the land in the watershed is currently agricultural. Using our estimated yield increases, we could expect forty thousand, six hundred twenty-six dollars and sixty-four cents increase in corn income, and for soybeans, twenty-nine thousand, four hundred seventy-five dollars and seventy-four cents, for an average annual benefit of thirty-four thousand, nine hundred fifty-one dollars and nineteen cents. The potential twenty-year return would be six hundred ninety-nine thousand, twenty-three dollars and eighty cents. Benefits to residential parcels focus on quality of life, neighborhood perception, and home site sewage treatment systems. A failed home site sewage treatment system could cost fifteen thousand to twenty-five thousand dollars to repair or replace. We find new developments average between, average around eight thousand, seven hundred dollars per lot spent on providing adequate drainage outlets. With twenty-three residential parcels in the watershed, this would equal two hundred thousand, one hundred dollars average benefit. Project sections. A decision on main one can be made independently of a decision on main two. Approval of main two requires the approval of main one. Denial of main one necessitates the denial of main two. If the decision is to deny, it is recommended to distribute costs incurred to this point to the landowners in the same ratio as determined by the final schedule of assessments. These estimated costs to date equal five thousand dollars. Finally, the engineer's recommendation. Based on all of the information gathered and generated, I believe this project as proposed is technically feasible and would serve as an adequate outlet for the drainage needs of the watershed. Furthermore, the parcel assessments for this project are within the range of assessments that can be expected for a project of this scope. The testimony brought to the Board of Commissioners by the landowners as to whether the benefits of this project exceed the costs should be given significant consideration in the decision to move forward with this project.
Thank you. Any questions for the board?
Yeah, Brett, I got a question for you. The first hearing estimated the cost at about four hundred and fifty-six thousand for the two sections, and this one has reduced to three hundred and seventy thousand. Just kind of, if you could explain what would cause the decrease?
We examined a couple different alignments in the first hearing. You know, obviously, that first hearing, we don't have survey information, haven't done detailed ground investigation. The alignment that was chosen was an alternate alignment and was significantly shorter than the alignment we were looking at originally. The other thing that we, I think, reduced the cost is we are not proposing any kind of surface grading on the upper end would be section two of the project. That's going to be tile only, and that tile is sized to handle surface water flow. So we kind of removed a component that we were originally considering.
Thank you.
Okay. Let me just then acknowledge, we need to acknowledge first, any landowner written testimony before hearing the live testimony.
We had the comments from the Pritchards, and we had comments from David Nicholas.
Okay, okay, thank you. Those speaking for or against the petition must be an owner as defined in section sixty-one, thirty-one point oh one of the Ohio Revised Code. And we have just acknowledged receipt of the written testimony, and the first thing we will do, then, is call for those wishing to testify in favor of the project. Is there anyone willing? Okay. And I will, if you could state your name, address, and let me ask our counsel, should we, should I swear everyone in before they say their name?
Yeah, you can swear them in as soon as they come up.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'll swear you in right now, then. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you are about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you. If you could state your name, address, and your parcel number?
I don't know. James McNeilis. My wife and I are the ones that put forward the petition to begin with. I just wanted to make sure that I am on record as still favoring?
Okay.
The project to go forward, and I'm one four nine one three Fancher Road.
Okay, okay. And you're not sure?
His number twenty-five on your ID sheet.
Okay.
Is it twenty-five?
Yes.
Twenty-five, okay. You may be done, sir. Any, any?
Oh.
Yes.
Well, my testimony was, I'm still in favor of this project moving forward.
Okay, okay, a man of whom?
I want to make sure that we know that I'm still in favor.
That's right, okay, thank you. Thank you very much, okay.
And if everybody not ready to see the light.
That's all right. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of the petition? Yes, sir. Please come forward, and I will swear you in. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you are about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
My name is Ryan King. My address is one five zero one zero Robbins Road. It's number two on the map.
Okay.
And the same thing, I just want to affirm that I still support this.
Okay, okay. Any, anything else?
No, that's it.
Okay, thank you.
I'm here now.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of the petition? Anyone else? Okay. I will then call for those wishing to testify in opposition to the project. Okay, yes, ma'am. I will swear you in. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you are about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
My name is Teresa Rakosi. We have two parcels in the watershed. Parcel one is three one six four four zero zero one zero zero four zero zero seven. Parcel two is three one six four four zero zero one zero zero four zero zero nine. Our address is one five zero eight zero Robbins Road. Good morning, Commissioners. As I said, my name is Teresa Rakosi. My husband and I, we have two parcels in the proposed Evans three five four watershed. I'm here today to express our deep concerns and strong opposition to the proposal for the landowner-funded changes to the watershed in our region, and I urge you to vote against the proposal. After thoroughly reviewing the details and the assessment estimates, it is clear that the proposal is not in the best interest of the majority of landowners, including ourselves. It could have unintended negative consequences for our property and our environment. The proposal lacks broad support from the landowners within the watershed. The watershed includes fifty-one parcels of land, yet the petition was initiated by a single petition, or a single parcel owner, and later amended by a second, accounting for less than four percent of the parcel owners in the entire watershed. Neither landowner appears to have made an attempt to speak with their neighbors concerning this endeavor. The proposal is not endorsed by a majority of those who would be directly affected and have to fund the cost. It is crucial that any decision of this magnitude, especially with the estimated cost for this proposal, is made with the consensus of the community impacted. A single landowner should not have the power to impose the financial obligations on the owners or others without securing at least a majority agreement. In fact, out of the thirty landowner-initiated petitions listed on the Delaware Soil and Water webpage, more than fifty percent of those petitions had majority signing. Evans three five four is not one of those petitions. The approach undermines the principles of fairness and democratic representation that should guide our community's actions. The cost estimates associated with the proposed changes are exorbitant and do not appear to align with the supposed benefits that our property will receive. It is essential that any financial investment made by landowners is justified by tangible and equitable returns. However, the estimates fail to adequately demonstrate how the significant financial burden will translate into proportional benefits for our affected property. While the final report indicates the manner in which the estimates were created, and again was described here today, it does so without providing any specifics to those in the formula. The estimate imposed on our two parcels of land, which totals three point eight nine nine acres, totals almost twenty thousand dollars, roughly five percent of the total project estimate. The final report by the Deputy Administrator of Delaware Soil and Water Conservation and the County Engineer indicates that the proposal is technically feasible and the assessments are within the range for the scope of this project. However, simply because it is technically feasible and within range does not mean it should be approved. The final report states that you, as the county commissioners, should give significant consideration to landowner testimony that the costs exceed the benefits. We do not feel that any of the proposed benefits equals or exceeds the estimates that we've received. Moreover, the financial implications extend beyond the initial assessments. The ongoing maintenance costs, which would be required in perpetuity, represent an additional financial burden. These ongoing costs could further exacerbate the inequity of the proposal, especially given the lack of majority consensus among the landowners. It is unreasonable to expect the landowners to commit to indefinite financial obligations on intangible benefits without broad community support. Furthermore, the proposal includes two proposed drainage lines, both of which we oppose. We are particularly concerned about line two. Our property is one of the farthest from the initial improvements titled main one. Since we are downstream, or since we are upstream from the improvements, we are being asked to bear the costs to extend all these improvements to our area. A large portion of our property is woodland, which has been determined to receive these benefits. Our property is thriving under a forestry plan. We intend to keep it as woodland. Disrupting the water flow in and through this area could directly and negatively impact the ecosystem protected by our forestry plan. This potential environmental impact to our property is a significant concern of ours, and the current proposal does not acknowledge or address these risks. In conclusion, we strongly urge that you, the commissioners, do not approve the proposal. It is imperative that any changes to the watershed are made with the broad community support and based on transparent and equitable assessments of the costs and benefits. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition to the project? Let's see, I see gentleman in the third row on the end. And I will swear you in. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you are about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you.
My name's Alan Davidson. I, the parcel I have in question is at forty-eight eighty-five Green Cook Road. I do not know the parcel number.
Thirteen.
Okay.
My, unlike the other young lady that just spoke, I'm at the other end of the watershed. My farm encompasses the headwaters of Rose Run, which would be the discharge point for for all this water, and has been during the entire existence of the farm. I knew all these parcels years ago by different owners, and I've watched the area in the last sixty years change substantially. You forced me to choose whether I was for or against the project. You didn't leave a qualification for sitting on the fence, but all these people are my neighbors. Some, you know, I, our family never had the option to choose how many neighbors we were going to get, and so now this is the end result, and I'll try not to act too nostalgic, being as I don't have a real, really a solid dog in this fight. I'm, I'm concerned with the fact that, you know, the upbringing I had was that you shut the barn door before the cows get out, and there's been a great lack of common sense in the development and development. development in Delaware County. I just recently terminated a, or completed, I guess I should say, not terminated, a 45-year career as a land surveyor, and I've seen a lot of changes over the year. And it's very concerning to me that so many of these building sites are approved without concern as to how they impact the areas immediately adjacent to them, and these are some textbook examples of that lack of oversight. I don't know what can be done about that, but I just wish we could change the way these things are processed so that we don't have to come back and have this assessed years after the fact. I think there are options with dialogue and agreement between neighbors, the way we used to do these things, in terms of coming up with solutions to these problems. I used to farm the farm immediately east of ours before it was sold for development. There is a tile that runs through that farm headed east that has been neglected over the years, and, you know, was carrying a large degree of that water to Rose Run, and, you know, my father used to, before he passed away, used to lament that, you know, if it wouldn't take that much of a, in his opinion, that much effort to repair that tile and move things on to the east and drain the area that is in question with this project. And I'm going to turn, I'm going to close my comments with just, I just wish that we could apply a little more common sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition? Yes, sir, way in the back.
I need to ask a question first. I'm not the landowner, I'm representing my parents, is that okay? They're too elderly to get here.
Sorry.
Thank you. Yes, you have to be in the, under the Ohio Revised Code, it has to be an owner, an actual owner, or an attorney representing the owner. No, not even an attorney, the owner. Okay. All right, anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? And I will swear you in. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you.
I see you're charging people thousands and thousands of dollars.
Oh, sir, I just need you to state your name and your address.
Warner Mackey, 15131 Fancher Road.
And do you happen to know your parcel number?
No, I don't know.
And your name again, sir?
Yeah, say your name again, please.
Warner.
It's ID number 27 on your map.
27, and your last name, sir?
Mackey.
All right.
See, you're charging people thousands and thousands of dollars for this drainage system, and why we're not voting on this, we should have the right to vote on it. Most of people farther east of this drainage system will not benefit from it. Our real estate taxes go up every year. I'm not speaking for everybody else, but I sure can't pay for this stuff. It's not right for people to build houses in wetlands where water runs and expect other people to drain it. You're gonna, will you guarantee after this is in that after a three-inch rainfall, that the people's not going to have any water in their fields and in their yard? It's all gonna magically disappear? If not, why should we pay for it? The only people that's going to benefit from this is the people that is requesting it. So I think those people should pay for it. That's all I got to say.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I think we can hold the applause, please. Is anyone else willing to speak in opposition?
Rod McKinley.
I'll swear you in, sir. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you.
Rod McKinley, I'm at 15400 Evans Road. I just have some design concerns with what
What, just a sec.
ID number 42.
42?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I'm a small parcel with a big bill, so very much against. And I have some design concerns on what's been shared with us so far regarding the two sections. One is what design storms were used for designing those two sections, and then do those design storms and the results of those, are those confirmed with the engineer's calculations and hydraulic modeling? And then we were given the two cost-benefit analysis today, and one is the agriculture benefit is extended over 23 years, and the recent development and foreseen development in the area does not confirm that all of those acres that are used in that cost-benefit analysis are actually going to be there and in agriculture. The other one is, is that the new benefits average $8,700 per lot, and that is totaled into the residential parcels. And are the, are those developments or those improvements required after these two improvements? So if we're averaging, you know, if you have the $8,700, are new developments no longer required or need, needed in the lots? So I don't think that the $200,100 average benefit is accurate either. Thank you.
Thank you. Brett, would you like to address some of those concerns?
I'll address the design question. The project's not designed to a storm frequency. It's designed using specifications from the Natural Resources Conservation Service, and it's designed what they call the drainage coefficient. We use the one-inch drainage coefficient, which is sufficient to size the tile, to handle the surface flows, as I mentioned in my presentation, and the drainage coefficient is a measure of the amount of water that's expected to enter the tile per acre of drainage area. So, yes, we are confident in that design. As far as the cost-benefit example, our cost-benefit analysis is meant to be a broad overview of the entire watershed. We cannot project out. When we do our report, when we do our assessments, we have to take a moment in time and look at that. You know, yes, there may be significant growth pressure in this area, obviously, with intel. We don't know what it's going to look like 20 years down the road, but we have to present to the board that broad overview of a cost-benefit example. It's up to each individual landowner to bring to you the cost-benefit analysis for their individual parcels. We can't get into the economics of each individual parcels, we don't even try. So, yes, the cost-benefit example that we've provided to you is what we do for these projects. We've done that for every project that we've done, and certainly encourage landowners, if they want to bring you other testimony that would counter that, that's their right and their obligation to do so.
Okay.
There seems to be a misunderstanding about who is benefiting. Could you explain?
Yeah.
People upstream have a different perspective, obviously. Could you explain?
Sure. From the standpoint of, we use the word benefit in these projects, the Ohio Revised Code is very specific that benefit equals use. So when I talk about benefited parcels, that means water runs off from that parcel and enters the proposed improvement at some point. That may be different than a landowner's definition of their monetary or other benefits of the project.
Okay.
I would close you up later, I'll just ask you now while you're up here. The lady, I mean, I'm not going to look up here, but she talked about in the second area, the wooded area and impact it could have on the habitat as it currently is. You have any comments?
I don't believe that this project would have any benefit or any impact on the woodland. Negative impact. Water's still running off that area.
Brett, I had a couple of questions while you're there as well. The individual assessments to some of the landowners, some of the residential properties are, look inconsistent to me. If you look at two, three, four, and five, parcels number two, three, four, and five, for example, they're all three, four, five acres, but number two is getting a $22,000 assessment, number three is getting five, four is 19, and six is 18.
So two has no woodlands on the property, so they would not have gotten any woodland I'm not sure three has a house on it, so there would have been no higher residential factor, but I don't have the assessment sheet right in front of me. But we've applied the factors consistent with
But it just looks like they're producing inconsistent results, because three, four, and five look like they're largely wooded, and look at 24, 22, and 23, same comment there. 23 is getting a $1,000, $1,800 assessment.
Yeah, 23 is all woods, so there's no residential on that property right now at all.
Okay.
And that's why you're seeing it be much lower.
But it looks like five is basically all woods.
But there is a house on there, so they would have had a half. We apply a half acre of our higher residential rate if there's a house on the property, because the house benefits more from the improved drainage than does woodland.
And then compare that to number 11. For instance, the farm is getting 20,000, but it's got 26 acres.
Yeah, farm ground, no residential, plus its percent use is much, much lower.
It just seems, again, based on looking at these over a lot of years, it seems like the residential allocations are steeper than
This project suffers from, this is a large but long watershed, so these parcels on the upper end, they're paying for a lot of tile under our proposal, whereas, you know, shorter, I'll say shorter, fatter watersheds, we don't see that. You know, it's kind of just a product of how the watershed is configured and just the amount of project that those projects, or those parcels are proposed to have to pay
Okay.
Do you have a question to answer?
No, it's all right. You can come up here and then State your question. I will swear you in, though, anyway.
Yeah.
You solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So my name's Trevor Lambert. Me and my wife recently bought parcel 18 on the back, and I guess when I was looking at the calculations, it said acres benefited is 7.1 acres. In total, we have 8.3 acres, and the acre that's being excluded looks like it's a back left outside of the watershed. I guess my question is, is when building the process, since we did it this past year, we met with Delaware County a lot on this subject, because about half our land in the central region of our property is all wetlands. Wetlands by the state of Ohio, I can legally, I cannot legally drain it, I cannot legally fill it in, it has to remain the same for the ecological purposes. So how can a project that is primarily purposed to drain water away be a benefit to my wetlands? I can't drain them. So I think like how are wetlands included in this? Because it's raining out saying that 7.1 acres is what my acres benefited is, even though probably three of that is all wetlands, I can't drain it into the watershed.
Okay, I will ask you to come back up, Brett. Thank you.
So that would have been covered by the woodland factor that we applied for estimating the scheduled assessments, and again, now we're back to that question of what does benefit mean? Water still runs off that wooded area and at some point enters the improvement. Is it, does the woods benefit in the classic definition of benefit as much as a residential portion of the property? Probably not. But water still runs off and enters the improvement, therefore it's considered benefited by the Revised Code.
Even though it's a wetland and it has to stay a wetland?
I'm not aware. I haven't looked at the woodland mapping, I don't know whether it's a wetland or not.
But what you're saying is naturally some portion of that water is going to run off.
Yeah. Water just doesn't stay in that woodlands, wetlands, whatever we want to refer to it as perpetually. It runs off and enters the improvement at some point. The exist, let me rephrase that. It runs off and enters the existing drainage infrastructure at some point and would also enter the proposed improvement at some point.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition to the project? Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God? Yes.
Scott Hensley.
Elizabeth Hensley.
15445 Evans Road.
Number 43.
Okay.
Well, first thing I want to say, it's hard to follow up, say anything after Teresa, first speaker said everything. When we originally built our house eight, nine years ago, we met with Harlem Township zoning. He said Harlem Township's a high-water table, so build accordingly. So raised our house up, put two extra sump pits in because of the amount of water. If the project goes through, what's the recourse if we still have standing water after these hard rains? And I might be wrong with the drone video, but it was a lot of rain, a lot of snow, ground was frozen, so we're going to have standing water.
Our property wasn't even visually shown in any of the drone video, even in the outskirts of the drone video. The presentation states that the average assessment is $7,000, and for our five acres, we're getting assessed $13,000.
So we just
And again, I understand the petition process, but if this doesn't benefit us, what's the reverse petition process since we're being asked, forced, as some of the other speakers said, forced to pay this with no majority and no vote?
We just want to go on record.
Record is opposing.
Opposing.
Sure. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I don't know if you want to comment on that. I mean, I think there again, being in the watershed, their water, will they be helped by this, Brett? I think that's what their concern is, too.
So the petition plan has been proposed, as all of our petitions are, to meet the request of the petition. So the design does not extend to their property because they did not sign or amend the original petition. If they need additional improvements to make best use of the outlet that would be created if the board chooses to approve the project, they could go through the same file petition and seek improvements or work together with their neighbors to install additional drain tile or infrastructure that would connect to the proposed project.
Okay. Anyone else want to speak in opposition to the project? Let's see, well, ma'am, I'm going to take you. Well, no, I'm going to take the lady in front of you.
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. A gentleman. Yeah, thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you. All right. Would you please raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you.
Okay, I really just wanted to let you know that I oppose this also, and how can we justify?
Name and address, please.
Rita Henkel.
Say again, please.
Rita Henkel.
Okay.
And I'm on 15500 Evans Road.
Okay.
So it looks like 45? Yes. 45.
Number 40 is the ID number.
Forty.
Forty.
Forty. Okay.
And the only thing I really wanted to say is, just kind of a follow up to what the last individual said, we're going to pay 200, $300,000 to benefit two homes. You know, they're saying it, they're not guaranteeing, or they're not saying it's going to benefit the other 50 or 49 of us. We're going to benefit two homes, and I just cannot see that that is humanly right or fair to that whole area. I mean, we built our house 20 some years ago. We were told it has a high water table. We were told when, you know, it rains, it's going to look a little wet. And when it rains really hard, we do look like we have a two acre pond in our side yard, but the next day it's gone. So there is already some drainage going on, or where is this going the very next day? And like Scott said, I think the drone picture was taken after we had a horrible rain two weeks ago, plus all the snow melting. The ground is frozen. Of course it's going to look like that. I'm sure not only that neighborhood looked like that, but probably every other one down the road. So I just, I mainly want to know that I think this is totally unfair. I feel horrible for the two homeowners. They built on wet ground. But if they would have done their due diligence, which at least I think, if they would have done their due diligence, they never would have done that. They would have known better, you know, because someone, I would have thought, would have been able to tell them that lays wet, you know, whether it's the township, whether it's the county, but someone that you go to in this home building process should have told them that that property is not a good property to build on. And, you know, making your neighbors and everyone around you pay for your improvement is totally against humanity, in my opinion. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I'll take, no, 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 that's cool, and I'm not clapping. Yes, the gentleman behind you.
Did you say we're, we can present questions to Delaware County, the engineer?
Yes, you can ask a question after we're done with the testimony. Yes, sir, I will swear you in. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
My name is Dan Funk, 15493, 15495 Evans. I'm not sure on the map here, I'm 46 and 47.
I think you're both.
I'm just here to offer support for my neighbors out here. I think this is completely out of line with what is being charged for this project. I'm really opposed to it. Again, like, like most of them have said, I don't see the big benefit. Many of these people have lived here for 20, 30, 40 years on their properties. You know what it is. You wait a day, you wait two days, and it's gone. Everything's okay. Like Rita just said, do your due diligence before you build and find out what, what's going on there, or talk to somebody who knows, because everybody that's sitting back here knows what goes on. And patience goes a long way of, you know, just getting, ask your neighbors if, you know, everybody here, I don't know most of them back there, but I could go to pretty much any of them. We get along, we, you know, take care of our area in there. And if somebody would have addressed us beforehand and said this, this is our concern, it could work it out instead of coming in here to fight it. So my other question or statement is, one with the agriculture, he said 20 years out, $644,000 or whatever the statement was on there, that he, 20 years out, none of that land is going to be agriculture. That's, I, I would throw that, those numbers out the window. We, we all know that for what's going on in that area, so. I've been going to other meetings for township. Everybody has said that Fancher is going to be widened. I mean, that's, that's kind of a given in that area, probably sooner than later. I don't have a date or whatever. We all live through county line road getting torn up and redone for the project that's going on in that area. When Fancher Road gets it, I assure you that the ditch that they're going to dig or whatever is going to be disrupted. Patience, can't we just wait till that project's done and do it all at one time if they have to? I've been by there. That little ditch along Fancher Road is completely overgrown. I would think they could come in and maybe clear that out, that section, wait, see what happens to it. And I think that's what our property taxes should be paying for now, because I believe that's county line, or county road on Fancher there. And get that cleaned up, and, and let's see what, how the water drains from there on it. So instead of going through all this and charging my neighbors and me an exorbitant amount of money, that's all I got.
Okay, thank you. And I believe the gentleman in the back in the orange.
Brett.
Oh, sorry, Brett. Ooh, sorry. Ooh, that's serious. Okay. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do. My name's Dale Turner. I'm the trustee for the Cora Hershey Trust, which is parcel number 28 on your map. And my, my, I guess thing about, first of all, it's a negative, okay, against the project, as most of the folks here in the room are, and for many of the same reasons. I have a little bit different take on it, because the property is now an inheritance, and as such, it's eventually going to have to be sold. And when it's sold to, to split the proceeds up among siblings, it'll undoubtedly be developed. In the meantime, it's farmland, and we're going to try to keep it farmland as long as we can. But we will not see any monetary benefit from this as far as the agricultural uses is concerned. And working in commercial construction as I do, I, I know that if a planned community, even if it's 12 or 15 homes goes in there, they will be required to put in stormwater detention, and it will have to be metered out into this, into the watershed at a pre-established rate. So I'm being asked to pay over $20,000 for the improvements to somebody that's far removed from us physically here in the area, and don't see any benefit to it. The process just seems unfair from the get-go. And like so many others have voiced, we've been to many township meetings, and the Harlem Township folks have been nothing but open about the issues that come up in the area, including things like this, the, the water table and its effect on people that might be buying property. So we're going to deal with our own here within a few years, most likely. And in the meantime, it's absolutely no benefit to us, so it's a no, no vote, if you will.
All right. Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition? Yes, sir. I will swear you in. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony that you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Yes.
Mike Pritchard, 15628 Evans Road. I believe it's parcel, or number 37 on the list here. I just want to reiterate, a lot of testimony here I do agree with, I do oppose this, this assessment here against all of us. I am a little bit on the outskirts of it, so it's hard for me to see justification of the benefits of my property. I'm right on the edge of the line, on the eastern edge, so it's, I don't, I don't have too much of an issue with water drainage going that direction. I also have some that goes the other direction on my property, which, so not my entire property, but almost all my property is assessed to go into this watershed. But I also do like to understand and see a little more transparency with how these, how the benefit has been measured per parcel. I, I look at it, I'm not trying to question like on the, you know, my neighbors or anything like that, but I just look at the two parcels next to me. One has a house on it, one does not, but is a residential and will have a house on it at some point. And they are, they are assessed 15% of what my assessment is at right now. So it just, I just kind of a little bit confused as to how those numbers. And I think it goes all across, is I do understand you can't forecast in the future, farmland turning into residential being developed, other kinds of areas there. But also, but, you know, how, like, if I have to be, if I have to be assessed this upon my property taxes over the next 15 years, I'm paying for this over the next 15 years, no matter what. If somebody comes in and builds, or they develop and they move it, they're, if this, there is even a benefit to this, they're not, there is no repercussion or no payment on them. Obviously paying for them, you know, or all of my other neighbors are going to be paying for that, that development. So I just kind of wanted to add my, my input, and appreciate it. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes, yes, sir, to testify against? Good morning. I will swear you in. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you.
I am Russ Stewart. I live at 14859 Fancher Road. I am, do believe I'm number 20.
Yes.
Do believe this all started with me, obviously me and Mr. McNeilus. When they built on that property, they built, I do believe, estimated like 14 acres at the lowest grade of the property. That property has always been wet, just like everyone else's, that's when it rains, and then it goes away. When they actually dug the basement, it was a sheet of ice. I even walked over and talked to the builder, like, do you realize how bad this gets here? And they knew. And they broke the pipe, the, the old drainage tile. And they rerouted all that, like, you know, like they should, and then they raised it up, built a moat around their property, which I don't even have a problem with. I understand. You got to protect your property. Then the problem come to, they dug below the grade, stopped at my place, the water rises and then comes over. Now all of a sudden, it's a dam, a dam that I never created. His builder did. I offered to put in a drainage tile, put in a catch basin. They said, I'm not an engineer. So I said, listen, we can fix this. I can put some more up on your property. He goes, don't come on my property. I was like, I won't. I can put it on my property, but you're still going to be wet, because you got a wall right there. We can put a catch basin here, this would all drain.
Just, just.
There, and that's what I deal with every day. So when we sat there, we decided to do that. They sat there, I do believe even Soil and Water said, well, catch basins really don't really work all the time, which is funny, because that's what I do for the city of Columbus. You probably have 20 of them just around this building. We put catch basins everywhere to drain water. Now, is it going to work under heavy, heavy rain? No. I mean, and honestly, what you guys even trying to propose, it's not going to work. It's, when, when all that water does, when we get those heavy two inch rainfalls, it does back up. But within six to eight hours, it's gone. Delaware County, Delaware County do believe Delaware County engineers designed the driveway next to me. They put a 56 inch culvert a foot above the grade, turned my whole field into a holding pond. But I have a catch basin there, and the water flows, and again, six, seven hours, it's gone. Water flows through, not a problem. I have the engineering reports from my engineer, due to the fact that the McNeilus's put me in a five-year lawsuit saying that I damned them up, which I never did. The, and the court system has always gone my way. They dropped the suit due to the fact that they finally just realized they're going to go this way. And again, this is what I deal with every day. There, I can show you all the pictures, engineering stuff, if you guys like to look over on your time, there's a lot here. The, the other thing is, the cost of this is extremely large for this area. Like I say, I work for City of Columbus. Sewer is coming down Fancher Road. I think it will be completed by '26. None of these houses are going to be here in five, 10 years. I was already approached with Columbia Gas. I do believe even the McNeilus's were approached by Columbia Gas for the project event. None of this is going to be here. So to spend this much money to do this, to only benefit two people, one house, I mean, Delaware County's wanted to okay for these people to build where they built. So we got to pay for Delaware County's mistakes, the builders' mistakes, the homeowners' mistakes? I think that's a big price to pay for, for this. And again, we can put a small catch basin, and 99% of the time, that water, that whole yard would be dry, except for the heavy rains, which, let's face it, we're, we're going to have some water here and there. It, it all goes away. I would like to ask, has anyone's house been destroyed by this water? I mean, because to do all this, I mean, I understand if someone's house is getting destroyed where it's just getting flooded down the river, whatever, but I'm sure you've had wet basements. I've had wet basements. I mean, the salt pump goes out. But to spend this kind of money and no property damage, that's at all? The McNeilus's were so worried that their house was going to flood, they put an in-ground pool in. I mean, that's, I mean, you worried about it flooding, and you put an in-ground pool in? So again, I can show you all the pictures. Anything you would like to look over, you're more welcome to have all this stuff.
Okay, you can hand it to our clerk.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yes. Engineer Robert Riley.
Yes, good morning. My name is Rob Riley, Chief Deputy Engineer. I, I understand this is emotional.
Oh, just, oh, sorry. I'll swear you in.
Yes.
Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you.
Again, Rob Riley, Chief Deputy Engineer with County Engineers Office. I first want to say, I, I understand these can be kind of emotional situations. I thought I'd take a minute here to, to address some of the comments and questions that have been raised through the, through the hearing. First and foremost, our job as engineer and the job of the Soil and Water District is to respond to the petition that's presented. What we have designed satisfies the, satisfies that petition. You are probably accustomed to seeing some of the projects brought before you that have laterals extending to different directions, different parts of the watershed. Being that there were only two petitioners for this project, that was the limit of the design that was proposed. Certainly, this design would accommodate any future extension of laterals if there were, if your board decides to proceed with the project. The reason we didn't include that is simply because there were no petitioners asking specifically for that. But again, this would accommodate those future laterals if indeed that was the desire of the property owners to petition for that and your board to approve that. So I wanted to make that very clear. This is not designed to be a storm sewer. If you think about a modern engineered subdivision that has, say, quarter acre lots with public streets, those in concept are designed with storm sewers to immediately remove water from properties through a storm sewer network, put that water into typically a detention basin, hold it there, and then release it slowly. This is primarily agricultural drainage we have in this area. So this essentially detention is the very first part. Water stands for some period of time, is released slowly into the subsurface tiles and removed from the watershed. So it's a little bit backwards from a typical engineered subdivision. That's important, because there are no engineered, these are the, higher revised code. That's important because there are no engineered, these are, the Highway Revised Code actually exempts large lots from the subdivision process. Developments or parcels over five acres are not required to conform to the engineering design for modern subdivisions, and that's codified in law. So even if there was an opportunity to do that, that would, that would take a change in the law to require parcel owners to do that. We're not suggesting that. I think what we, what we're proposing here again satisfies the need of the petition. I totally understand there's, there's folks that are questioning whether this is, the benefit exceeds the cost. That's not really our job to, to tell you whether it does or not. We propose a solution that, in our mind, satisfies the need of the petition. It does accommodate for future modification if needed, if desired. But with that said, happy to answer any additional questions you have.
There was a comment made by the last speaker, just for clarification. Delaware County approved. Would you like to clarify that or comment on that?
Yeah, we do not, again, on large lake lot developments, we do not approve the drainage. The only thing, and Brett can speak to this because his office does that, if there are existing tiles or existing drainage features, he will, his office will work with the builder on a drainage protection review to basically ensure that upstream properties are not negatively impacted by, say, cutting a tile. And you just heard from one property owner who said that was actually the case on the McNeilus property, but I believe the McNeilus did reroute that tile out and around their house. And that's really the, the goal of that, that program, to make sure that, again, it's not designed to address the drainage on the properties, to make sure that other properties are not harmed by that.
Just a question about intel, possible ramifications on this project with intel.
Yeah, and so it's, it's certainly reasonable to expect that some folks will want to sell their ground for development. Land is becoming very valuable in this area for obvious reasons. That really starts with a landowner deciding that it's time to quit farming it and sell it to someone to build homes. That's not our decision. It's, it's no one's decision except for the property owner to make that transaction. So if any of these lots are developed into modern, I'll say engineered subdivisions, those would have to go through a drainage, excuse me, an engineering review through our office. But again, large lots over five acres do not have to, do not have to do that. And that's primarily what we have in this, in this area is the large lot parcels.
So before you could do anything, do you foresee doing anything due to intel?
Well, typically, the constraining factor on splitting a lot is the absence or availability of sanitary sewer. You have to have typically at least two acres for an onsite home treatment system with the soils we have here. If you don't have sanitary sewer available, typically that's going to be your constraint. If sanitary sewer does come to this area eventually, that could potentially present the opportunity to develop smaller lots. And again, those would be subject to our subdivision regulations.
Okay. Any questions, any other questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other testimony against the project? You've already testified.
All right, okay. Ask any more questions?
Just come on up and then I'll let you respond.
The, with the, the engineer, you're saying that you guys did not own that driveway, you did not? Because the lady that owned it was here at the last meeting and said that the council and the engineers designed that driveway to have that culvert that high, which, again, it does work, but that has to rise, you know, five feet to get full use. That's, that's a heck of a holding pond on my property. But again, it does flow and I'm not, I'm not even concerned about it. The other thing is, if this project goes through, are you putting that underground? Are they going to put the pipe? Are they going to do it, or are they just going to run a ditch right through all of our houses and destroy our land value?
I can have either Rob or Brett.
Yeah, I can speak to the driveway culvert. That's, my understanding is that driveway is part of a common access, or that is a common access drive. And so there was an engineer that basically sized that drive culvert. But it's not, I guess it's not a conventional subdivision as we're accustomed to seeing where the water would be detained or routed in a different manner. It's basically passing whatever water comes through naturally under that driveway. I understand what's being said about the size. It's a big pipe. I believe it's a forty-two or forty-eight inch pipe. But in terms of, I guess I'm not sure I understood the question about routing ditches or tiles through homes. We certainly wouldn't route ditches or tiles through homes. That doesn't make much sense.
Well, what I'm asking is, so when you go right through the middle of my property, all right, are you putting a ditch in there? Or are you just going to put a pipe and then put back to the lower top of it? Because I mean, that's pretty expensive, that first phase. It's pretty expensive.
So yes, there would be new subsurface drain tile.
Sir, you can have a seat.
And then I can come back?
I don't know.
There'll be new subsurface drain tile and there would be a surface drainage swale as I presented in my presentation with the representative pictures. It would be, it's not a ditch. It would be something that would be mowable or crossable with a lawn mower, but would be a path for water to flow from point A to point B.
Okay. Thank you. Last question.
So what I was trying to get at, when you do that, it's going to lower the house value, the property value by doing this. So please can take that in consideration of the, the cost of this project and how much you're going to destroy the land value of five homes for the mistake of somebody else. You know, I mean, Delaware County allowed them to build their houses there. So I don't understand why everyone here is responsible for it. And that's why I just, because I need to get back to the end of my property. I've had to put it off for six years now to put a barn back there for my daughter's horses. Haven't been able to do anything. Now I finally got to where I can, and now I'm going to get this. And, you know, I can't take a chance of having these horses. They're, they're not cheap to go through a ditch line. So like, if it's going to, if this happens, they're going to have to put a culvert across that and level that off. That's, or we'll be, I guess, fighting in court on this one. I don't know. But thank you.
Okay.
Obviously, I'm a nut.
Okay. Does anyone else wish to speak in opposition? Okay. Sir, you had a, I believe you had a comment. Yes, ma'am.
Am I allowed to?
Oh, yes. You're the owner, right?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. No, I need to just swear you in. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony that you are about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So help you God.
I do.
Thank you. Cindy McNeilus, one four nine one three Fancher Road, whatever parcel
that is. The first thing I'd like to say is that absolutely stunned at the innuendo and assumptions and utter lack of information that a lot of people have presented to you. If some, basically, I want to say, how dare anyone suggest that we did not go to our neighbors in a neighborly way a number of times to only be told we weren't seeing what we were seeing and we weren't, we were imagining the photographs and everything of the dam being built because our builder called us one day and told us that that was actually happening. So we even had our attorney write a letter, say, you know, can we work this out, whatever. We went to court because we had no other recourse. Mr. Stewart was absolutely unreasonable and untruthful about the whole thing. And that's why we're here today. We were in court and we didn't lose anything. After all of the delays and everything, we decided that we would just try to let the ditch petition go through and just try to, you know, let things calm down. We still have the right to continue our suit against him because we do have the proof of testimony and all of the pictures and the engineers' report. And the other how dare you is how dare people stand up here and say that we built on wetlands? Do we come across this stupid to anyone? Go ahead and answer that. We met with Delaware County. We were not on wetlands. As a matter of fact, we bought the property and we had it for several years before we built on it. It was out there many, many times. I would drive the truck from front to back. I would side to side. And at times, there was a little bit of east to west trickle after it rained. Most of the time it was dry. So we didn't have this problem. We contacted Delaware County. We did everything they asked us to do. And that was just said, this big ditch that runs from the backside of our property all the way across, we didn't do that for our benefit. We did it to drain the people that were upstream because that was our responsibility as a property owner, not to impede that in any way. We did that. We did everything that we were asked to do, just like our new neighbor. They contacted Delaware and they did the things that they were supposed to do. And to have Mr. Stewart come up here and act like he's the least bit knowledgeable about the, just put a drain in, that was, Delaware County visited him and said, that's laughable. That's not going to solve the problem, as had many engineers. So for him to say, well, I offered this and I offered that, that is just not true. He never offered to put tile down. He said the drain and every single person told us, that's not going to work. So why would we do that?
Thank you, ma'am.
When, there was considerable cost to us to do. We had to pay for that trench. Nobody else paid for it. And we did, again, we did that to drain upwards. We had to pay for all of the recommendations that Delaware County made. We, our driveway, we put in a culvert because they told us we needed to. Everything they told us we needed to do, we did it. And it's not our fault that everybody else.
Okay, no. We can't, we can't, we can't litigate a lawsuit here, ma'am. So if you could just confine your comments.
Sure, sure. But I want to remind everyone, the reason we're here is because we approached our neighbor in a neighborly way and asked to solve this problem. There is a ditch or a dam built on that property. There are pictures. Why do you think the aerial view had, had nothing?
Ma'am, ma'am, thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Um, I am going to close the public hearing right now.
It is eleven thirty-three. I just need you to note the time.
Great. Okay. Thank you. All right. The only questions that I have Brett would deal with, just to Brett here. You mentioned a decision on main one can be made independently of two. You wanted to just show us on the map?
Yeah, on the map, main one would be the black and white line.
Okay.
And main two would be the black and yellow.
Okay.
I think I made it yellow.
Okay.
Yes. Main, main one would be the outlet for main two. And so without approving main one, you cannot approve main two.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. I will ask the commissioners if you have any questions, comments?
I don't know that I have any questions. I, I'm always disappointed when we have people that cannot disagree agreeably. Everyone in this room might address that, too. Applauding is inappropriate, should not be done. It's discourteous. And speaking when someone else is speaking is equal discourteous. And fortunately for you, I will not make my decision based on that. But as I say often, when you leave here, you're still neighbors. And try to keep that in mind. I've listened to the testimony and it's, the majority of residents, it's not a fact. It's not what, something we have to make a judgment based on. My judgment's based on the facts. And frankly, I have not heard testimony today that convinced me the benefits exceed the cost. So that's my observation today and my point.
Maybe I had a little different angle on it, but for, most of these, or a lot of these that we get are majority, if not significant majority agricultural, and the benefits accrue to them and the costs, you know, accrue to them as well. And, and what struck me about this one is that the residents, which is the vast majority of the number of parcels, are bearing a much higher cost according to this allocation than the ag sectors. And typically, the ag sectors benefit more than the residents do. And so for that reason, I just don't think the cost to the residents of this project exceed, exceed the benefits. So that's, that's, that's where I am, according to all the testimony.
Okay. Who would like to propose a motion then? I think you're dividing.
No, I think we said the same way.
Okay, tell me again what you're.
I do not believe the benefits exceed the cost.
Ah, gotcha. Okay.
I'm saying the same thing, and particularly because of the allocations to the residents. The residents' allocations seem to be disproportionately high and in this case.
Resolution number two five dash one eight six. In the matter of the commissioners setting aside the order for and dismissing the petition for the Evans number three five four main one watershed drainage improvement project due to the cost is equal to or exceeds the benefits of the improvements. Motion five.
So moved.
Discussion. I think we'll move on that. I, I agree. I do think the costs exceed the benefits. Vote.
Vote on motion two five dash one eight six. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
And then we have a second part of that since you dismissed the petition. Resolution number two five dash one eight seven. In the matter of ordering that the cost of the proceedings of the Evans number three five four main watershed drainage improvement project, including the cost incurred by the Board of Commissioners, the County Engineer, and the Delaware County Soil and Water Conservation District in making surveys, plans, reports, and schedules, be distributed to the landowners in the same ratio as determined in the final estimated assessments presented at the final hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Vote.
Vote on motion two five dash one eight seven. Mrs. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
And since you denied one, we do not need to address number two.
Okay. All right. We are done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further business?